Alright. Can everyone hear me? Yes, okay.
Like, can you hear us? Okay.
Alright, everyone can hear me? Yes, okay, I'm getting feedback, so let me make sure. Are you all getting feedback from me?
No.
It does, alright, you know what, let me switch to these headphones, because maybe... For some reason, it's not feeding through my headphones. Use this all while we work through these technical difficulties. Okay. Am I still good? Okay, can everybody still hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great, that's much better, alright. Thank you, everyone, sorry for the bit of a delay, but I would like to call this policy meeting to order. Like, to welcome everyone. And Ms. Adams, would you mind calling the roll?
Please sit east step.
Here.
David Wortman. Stephanie Adams.
President.
Nelson Bulley.
Here.
Judy Justice. Jeanette Nichols.
Here.
All around the bar.
Can't hear you.
Alright, are there any other individuals on the line or here in person at the boardroom if you could take a moment to identify yourselves?
Janine Murphy, from the North Carolina School Boards Association. Working with the policy project.
Deborah Stagner, Board Attorney.
Nancy Bracken, Interim Auditor.
Anthony Manzo, Human Resources.
Dale Burns, Interim Superintendent.
McKenna Osborne, the North Carolina School Board Association.
Alright, is that everyone? I think there was, we missed one person, who was it that was? Okay. Did I hear Ms. Braswell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I thought there was somebody that I had talked to at the same time, okay, great, alright, well, welcome, everyone. Ms. Nichols, do you normally call for an approval of the agenda?
I do, I do, I normally call the meeting to order. And, yes, we need approval of the agenda as presented to the board members and staff.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second, okay. So, our first item on the agenda is the review of the North Carolina School Board Association services. So, who's going to do that for us?
Well, actually, I'm sorry, technically, can we move to vote on the agenda first?
Oh, I've got enough, okay. Does the favor of agenda as presented?
Aye.
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 So, who is presenting the review?
I'll be doing that, okay.
So, are we all ready?
Yes.
Ready.
Thank you for having us here today, actually, I don't really know how much detail you want to... I, okay, so, I don't know how much detail you want us to go into here, Dr. Burns has suggested that in order to kind of get the policy services, the policy project started, that it would be a good idea to, for the policy committee to meet and have a few sample policies to get a feel for how the process will work. The way we work here at the School Board Association is we assign one of our staff attorneys to work individually with the board from the start to the finish of the project, hopefully. The, a project does take anywhere from eighteen months to two years, so it's a, it's a step-by-step process that requires, basically, the board to review every policy in their policy manual, which is a a big undertaking, and we recognize that, and we are here to support the board at each step of the way, and we recognize that boards go through transitions during this time as your policy committee and your board will do, and also as you gain a new superintendent, so hopefully, we can work with the board step by step, especially over the six, next six to eight months, where there obviously are going to be some transitions. Normally, what we would do when we do a policy manual project is initially, it takes us a month or so to create what we call correlation tables, where we basically compare our manual to the school board's current manual, and then do the reverse of that, their manual to ours, so that it's very easy for everyone to see which policies correlate, maybe not word for word, or idea for idea, but are basically comparable policies. We haven't had time to create this correlation table yet, so we're not really into the mode that we would normally use. What we would foresee, as Dr. Burns requested, we have put together, there were four policies, or three or four policies that were the policy committee had been working on earlier this year, maybe in January or before that time, and that seemed like a good starting point for the board policy committee to kind of look at how the transition would work in the context of those three or four policies that were already in front of the policy committee. So, that's what we prepared for your policy committee review today. It, it, there's always some transition in terms of, there will be policies that your manual didn't have, there will be policies that your manual had something very similar, so our recommendation is just to slightly would be to add things in from your current manual, just to remember that the, that what this process presumes, for the most part, is that the board will be adopting a policy manual that's based on the North Carolina School Boards Association Policy Manual, call, we call it Policy to Lead the Schools, PLS, so we have about three hundred and ten policies. We would, with, with a certain numbering system, and the board would be transitioning to that numbering system. And so, we have some good examples of that today, and the ethics policy, for example, the board had an ethics policy, so you can look at how our ethics policy is similar in, in the additions we made. I'm gonna let McKenna do all that, I was just mainly doing introduction. Did, I mean, we envisioned that McKenna would talk through each of the policies that she has sent you for review. I don't know whether that's what you would like us to do, or, or how you want to proceed from here.
I think it would be very helpful if she does go through it, let me ask you this, excuse me, I mean, do you also look at our personnel handbook and our administration, the manual, to ensure that the policy numbers are now what representative of the new policies, and also that they're current?
Okay, so, that's sort of two separate things, so, the first thing you'll do is change your policy number, okay? So, let's, you know, we can take your ethics policy as an example, you're currently, your ethics policy is twelve forty, under our system, it would be twenty-one twenty.
Yeah.
So, let's say the board adopts that, any documents in your system that refer to this policy would then be revised after that point, the board policy rules, so to speak. So, what you put in policy is what's going to have to roll out into your personnel manual, now, let me just state that, though, the, the, the deep, when I say personnel manual, I'm not referring to these, department, DPI's benefits manual. You will find a lot of references in our policy manual to that, your board is obligated to follow that state manuals, so, our policies do conform to that, I don't, I have not seen a copy of your current personnel manual. I would assume that it is aligned with the state Personnel Benefits Manual to a large degree, in terms of how many holidays people get, and how many sick days, and so forth, so. But no, we have not yet seen any of the supporting documents, we generally don't review that, and we generally don't roll the changes into that, the school system does that, so, for example, let's talk about your student handbook. Generally, the school system takes whatever changes the board has adopted and incorporates it into the student handbook, so if, if the short-term suspension policy now has a new number, then someone within the school system would take that and make that change, and say, short-term suspension is now policy XYZ, instead of policy ABC.
Okay.
Does that answer that question?
Yes, and I'm sure Dr. Burns is aware of all of this, and has the right people to ensure that it's taken care of.
Well, it will happen on a step-by-step basis, it doesn't happen overnight.
Yes, and we'll all have to double-check.
Right, that's true.
Ms. Nichols, if I could, talk just for a second about that, yes, there will have to be HR changes, and also with Student Support Services changes to reflect the new policies. Janine, would you talk a bit about maintaining two policy manuals? Because that's in effect what will have to happen going forward, correct?
That's, that is correct, what we've found over the years, and I didn't say, McKenna's been working with us since two thousand and seven, and probably has done, oh, I don't know, twelve or fifteen policy manuals, there is this transition period from old to new, and it's important to make it as transparent as possible for both your staff and for the public and students, obviously, you want it to be clear, for example, want to be clear what the current grievance policy is, or what the current suspension policy is, so, what we recommend is that the board maintain set up and maintain two separate manuals, you could call it the old or the existing, and then the new. This can be done online, pretty easily, and with what we call a landing page, which would mean that when a person logs into the school system website, and then clicks on board policy, the first thing they would see on the landing page would be an explanation that the board is in the process of revising its policy manual, and during the transition, there will be times when two policies overlap, or when a new policy refers to a policy that hasn't yet been adopted. The landing page will tell people to first look for the policy that they're looking for, let's say they're looking for short-term suspension. They would first look in the new policy manual to see if a new policy has been adopted, if it hasn't, then they go back and look in the old policy manual, the landing page basically states that the new policy takes precedent over the old, as you're doing the policy manual, basically, let's say you adopt a new short-term suspension policy, then you would take down the old, the old one would be removed, so that they, once you have repealed your old one, the public would no longer be, or the staff would no longer be able to see it, and they wouldn't be confused by which one is the old and which is the new. You'll see on your screen there, a draft, a letter, this is a draft landing page, a document, this one is set up for a school system that's using... This one is set up, uh, for a school system that's using our online web hosting system. So it does refer to the search function and because our policies are searchable. Um, but depending, it doesn't, you know, you could use, this could be revised to, um, this could be revised to adapt to whatever kind of online hosting system you have. Um, mainly I think it's important to let the public know that the process is going on, that there are two manuals. And, um, if they have any questions about what is the current policy, there's somebody, there's a link, there's a person at the school system that they could contact to, for clarification. Um, so we're concerned that there'd be good communication, uh, with the public and with your s- employees as to what the current status is. So, um, that's what we recommend is two different manuals and as one, the new one bulks up more and more policies, the old one has, um, less and less policies, then you get to the end of it and then we have a c- what we call a cleanup. We look at those last ten or fifteen policies and usually they're the ones that, kind of leftovers, nobody's quite sure whether they still want them anymore or not, you know, you make a call one way or the other. Um, and the board votes at the end of the process to effectively repeal anything that's left, uh, just to make sure all the old policies, um, are actually officially repealed. And then, then you would take the website, the old website down, archive it for your public, uh, records request, of course, but then you would no longer need to have the old one out there in front of everybody.
Janine, if I could ask one more question about this, um, and logistically this is a bit of a challenge. Um, the district currently hosts the policy manual. And the process that we're looking at going forward, the district would then have to deal with the old and the new, the migration, the landing page. You mentioned the hosting by the School Board Association. If you, um, if, if you folks host this, do you take care of the changes from old to new and maintain that as part of the process?
If you use our web hosting service, yes, we do. So, um, we, we've, um, in working with boards, we have used one of, some boards don't want the old manual posted, and so the only thing we post for them are the new ones as they're adopted. But for other boards, um, Alman's Burlington and Durham being two current examples, there's a listing for the old manual and the new manual. And, um, as part of our service, um, once a policy, let's say the board adopts this ethics policy, let's say your committee today puts it forward to the board, the board votes on it at, um, you know, well, they read it in May and they adopt it in June. At the point where it was adopted, um, with our web hosting policy, your board assistant or whomever manages the notes would send that policy to us. We would, as adopted by the board, the important thing for us is that we have the adoption date and the policy exactly as the board voted on it. Sometimes there's confusion about which version, uh, but we need the exact copy the board voted on and the adoption date. We'll clean it up and we'll post it right to the website, so, to your school system website. So that would eliminate some of the, um, administrative work for both your technology folks and also for your board assistant, because all your board assistant would have to do is email us the policy adopted and it would be posted within twenty-four hours.
So when you say clean it up, then you mean you're going to delete the old policy at that time?
Okay, so when I say clean it up, what I mean is sometimes boards adopt a policy that has strikeout language in it, so there was an original policy and then somebody, you know, made a motion to add a phrase or something and the board, the board adopted it with some strikeout version. So when I say clean it up, I mean we would go in, save all the changes, delete everything that the board struck out, and then post it that way.
Okay.
Um, we would help track what, um, if there's a one-for-one, um, replacement, let's say between the old ethics policy and the new, then the board could vote to re- rescind the old one too, and then we would take that one down.
Okay.
What happens sometimes, Jeanette, is that, um, and McKenna will show this later today, is that, um, a policy that we're presenting to the board, um, and the comparable new Hanover, current New Hanover policy don't address exactly the same material. So it's possible an old, new Hanover policy adopted of, uh, contains some material that isn't in the new policy version because we have it somewhere else in a different policy. So it's not always po- uh, possible to take down the quote "old" policy yet if there's still a section or two in that old policy that hasn't been superseded by the material in the new policy. So it can get a little complicated at times and we try to work with the board to keep that, um, as unconfusing as possible.
Okay. Ms. Nichols, um, I wanted Janine to talk a bit about the web hosting. During the process, things can become a bit confusing and not that staff in New Hanover County Schools can't handle it, but the School Boards Association is very experienced with this process. Um, I'm, I'm gonna have a conversation with Janine about the web hosting and explore that as a possibility for the district. I think the cost is nominal, um, but it, it is an annual cost once you get into that. They preserve, um, the old policies. And the other benefit is in the future they will provide annual and sometimes more frequently than annual updates. Um, working through the updates with them hosting makes it very easy to maintain the policies and, and keep the numbers straight and also preserve what was in the past. So I'm, I'm gonna have a conversation with Janine about that, um, going forward to help streamline this process.
Okay, sounds good. Dr. Burns, the next time you speak, can you speak louder?
I can.
That's so much better.
Cause that, I picked up my mic a little bit, maybe that's what it is.
Thank you.
Okay, so if, um, you guys don't have any further, um, I'll just mention that when I, uh, Allison and I came down and met with the board in January, which seems like a lifetime ago, um, we went over, um, how the process would work. And I, um, sent the outline back to Tabitha in case you want to, uh, refer to it. I'm not going to, um, go over it again now, that would be redundant, but, um, just to point out that, um, as we do this, we will send policies and charts. We would hope that come August, we would actually start doing this section by section rather than three or four policies at a time. Right now, this is sort of the, uh, everybody get used to how the process works phase. Uh, but this was the outline and if you, uh, scroll down to page three, um, of the outline, you'll see that, um, let's see, keep going just a little bit further to section B. Yeah, you can see where I, the chart, there was a comparison there in the, that shows how our policies coding system differs from the New Hanover one. What our one thou, we have nine sections as does your manual. Um, but they have different titles and a different order. So, you know, we're kind of reshuffling the deck a little here. You have two hundred and forty-six policies, we have three ten. Um, McKenna tells me from the policies that she's reviewed, that New Hanover's policies tend to be longer than ours. Um, so this will be part of the process of, um, sorting this out and figuring out if there's things that are redundant or obsolete, they can be eliminated and try to make it more streamlined, uh, for the board and for New Hanover County Schools going forward. We'll also try to, um, make recommendations for the times when material is better suited to be in an administrative regulation that is, um, that, you know, the details that the superintendent can manage as opposed to having, um, the board vote on a very detailed policy, which is then set in stone and it's, it's hard to be flexible and adjust to ongoing situations when, um, the, uh, details are in a board policy because then it takes two months to change the policy. So, um, I'm gonna chain it, turn it over to McKenna now and she's gonna explain to you the chart that she sent you and the three policies, three or four policies. And, um, please feel free to ask her questions about the policies and what, what she sees in terms of the three that she's looked at.
Hi. Okay, yeah, oh, there we go, yep. Um, so this is the correlation table and every section of policies, like Janine said, normally you'll get many more policies than at a time, there'll probably be more like thirty policies. And they'll all be, i- i- it'll be the entire section of policies together, so you'll get a part like this. And so on the left-hand column, that is gonna be the new policy number, uh, for the new manual. The next column will be the new policy title. And then that middle column, that's showing which of your current policies, uh, correspond to the new policy. So it might be a one-for-one correlation, like this, the first policy here, the ethics policy, where you had one policy that was the same exact topic. And so that's an easy, when we, when you adopt the new policy, you can get rid of the old one. Um, sometimes like the remote.
McKenna, we can't hear you.
One hundred, for example, so.
McKenna, can you hear us?
You can. Yes, I can.
Okay, we can't, I, I'm not, I'm getting some interference. Yeah, your internet's getting spotty, I think. McKenna has several children that are going to school at the same time on the same internet connection. It could be that one of her kids is logged into a class all of a sudden.
She may need to call recess.
For the kids, right, yeah. They want to check. McKenna, did we lose you?
I, I can hear you.
Okay, we were, you, you were just kind of, um, not here, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
I think she's still coming in and out.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Hear what I'm saying? No?
Heard that. We're hearing, yeah, a little bit here and there.
You heard me, you can hear me now?
Yes. Keep talking.
Okay. Uh, have you heard what I was explaining already or do I need to repeat?
No, I think you need to start over, you were, you ta- the last I heard was that the ethics policy was a one-to-one replacement, pretty much.
Yeah, we were going through the correlation table and you were explaining how each column worked and we were talking about the ethics policy.
Oh, she's gone again.
Uh, well, while she's, um, figuring that out, I'll just say that with the ethics policy, if you will look at the, um, policy that we sent you, um, you will see that, well, so the ethics policy, there's some nor- there's a North Carolina statute that specifies four things that need to be in the ethics policy. Um, and those are the things you will see in section A of that policy. Um, and your current policy has that and our current policy has that. So that's sort of a one-for-one match. If section B of that policy, um, are other areas of concern for the board, all of the things listed there in section B are, you know, optional at the discretion of the board. What McKenna has done is she has added into, so what you're looking at is our standard policy. Um, well, you, first of all, notice, we've taken your standard, our standard policy, we've put the New Hanover County Board of Education footer at the bottom. And the red line, uh, in B three, for example, that was one item that was in your current New Hanover policy that was not in our standard policy. So this is the, how the customization process works is that, um, we have added that provision from your current policy into ours. Now that's assuming you want to keep it. There may be times when there's stuff in your old policy and you may decide that, that whatever it is, isn't important to the board anymore and it doesn't need to go into the new policy. But let's just assume for purposes of this discussion that you want what is in red, B three, you want to, that to continue to be in your policy. So we've added that to your policy. If you could go up to, um, go to the next page, there are other, um, strikeouts and, yeah, so, uh, you know, so we've added, um, in addition to what was on the previous page, we also added number eight from your current policy. And in number thirteen, we, um, changed that, take our basic language and then brought in some language from your existing policy manual. Number fifteen, um, represent the entire county without fear of bias. Um, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, these are all things that are in your current ethics policy that, um, are not in ours. So we customized it in. As I said, the things we would stress to your policy committee and to your board is that the total number of items on this list can be added to or revised. So you don't, just because we pulled it out of your current manual and put it in here doesn't mean you have to keep it. If you decide that particular item is no longer of interest or concern to the board, you could choose to strike it out. So this is one of the areas with, in the back and forth of the policy, let's say the policy committee, um, looked at this policy and decided, okay, you know, we're not really worrying about number B eighteen anymore, we're gonna strike, we're gonna strike that. So when it would go to the, um, that, you know, after the policy committee meets, that would be communicated to us that, um, strike out that provision. We would clean that up and send it and, but otherwise, let's say otherwise, the policy was ready to go to the board for the first read. So what we say is, when we're talking about clean it up, is we would strike it out, create a new version to go to the board that did not include B eighteen. Okay, so this one is a pretty straightforward, um, policy because this is an area where the board has discretion, the board, it can make changes and, um, then communicate those changes to us. Um, and assuming that any changes you made, you know, you didn't add something that was blatantly illegal, like we're gonna discriminate, discriminate against people based on their age or something like that, um, assuming that, you know, all of the things you wanted to add were legally acceptable, then, um, it would go to the board, the board would do the first read, the second read, and adopt the policy and the policy would be posted in the new manual to whatever, however you decide to post that, and would be posted under the policy number, um, with the school board, the School Board Association number. So that would represent the first policy in your new manual, I guess you'd say. Um, McKenna, are you back with us or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here if you can hear me.
Okay, I'm gonna hand it back to you now.
Okay, so you went, Janine, you went through the first policy?
Yeah, I went through ethics and I don't, but I'll ask for, um, if, throw it open for questions from the board.
Sure.
Um, Dr. Burns, number thirteen, and I apologize for my allergies today. On the evaluation process of employees, some board members have asked to see those evaluations. some board members have asked to see those evaluations. This is something that you'll probably want to take note about and think through and give the board some advice on.
Yes, Ms. Nichols, and I'm reading that now. So this policy is requiring a regular and impartial evaluation of all employees. Ms. Stager, you can weigh in on this. If a board member wishes to see an evaluation, then that could be done only when the board is in session, in closed session. Is that correct?
Yes, individual board members would not be able to review or ask for and review the evaluations of employees in closed session if there is an issue with perhaps a recommendation for a contract renewal or a recommendation for some other personnel action. And it would be important for the board as a whole to consider an evaluation, then that would be appropriate in closed session.
But that's not the language here. Language here is that we are requiring the evaluation itself.
Yes.
So the language here is, is reasonable, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That would, that would be my interpretation. This is simply setting an expectation for the administration.
For all employees.
And McKenna, I'm sure you're gonna change all the pagination at the bottom of some of these policies.
The, well, the pagination will be correct. I'm not sure the version you're looking at, so like on my screen, it is actually showing like the correct.
It says page two of two, but there's three pages.
Yeah, I mean, the, on my computer, it is showing page three of three, but that's just because we're, if you're, when we're reviewing it and track changes, that stuff gets messed up, but then once we clean it up, once we accept all the changes,
You'll catch on.
That resolves itself, for sure.
Okay, do we have any, board members who'd like to do anything about twenty-one, twenty?
Sure, points eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. I think those are really good goals. My concern is that they don't really seem enforceable.
You're not speaking loud enough.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, points eighteen, nineteen, and twenty concern me. I think those are good goals. I'm not sure that they belong in a policy. I could see a situation where one board member says, well, they're not remembering they're part of an education team. You know, I, I don't know how we enforce those. And so I'm not sure that we should keep them.
So from what I'm understanding, we're getting these today and we're gonna look at them. And then the policy committee will again look at this and take recommend, and then we'll send first reading, and that's when Nelson, you can talk about these. Is that the way we're gonna do it, Deborah?
Well, I believe, I mean, certainly it is up to the policy committee, but I, I would encourage you to discuss these things first in the committee and reach a consensus in the committee as to what ought to be put forward to the board. And obviously, once it gets to the full board, individual items can be discussed. But if the members of the policy committee have already considered, you know, for example, maybe number eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and have decided as a committee that those really aren't, that's really not language that, that want, that you want to go forward and support in recommending to the board as a whole, you can already have discussed that here in this, in this forum.
Oh, okay. Bill, what do you think?
Well, you know, you and I have to decide what goes to the board, but you know, this particular policy's ethics. And I, I think eighteen and nineteen, you're trying to keep somebody from going the road. You know, we've, we've had that problem. But we need to have some kind of policy to keep people, you know, reeled in.
I think if you're talking, if you're talking about specific board member commitments, if you look at it from that, through that lens, you know, we're talking about school board member ethics. So Nelson, does that maybe make a difference if you're thinking of it that way?
Yeah, I suppose, I just, like I said, I worry how you already have take no private action, maybe keeping demonstrate respect, I just worry about how you enforce that policy. How do you say violated that?
I mean, to your point, it would be difficult for some of these to say, to enforce any of them, like even fifteen, represent the entire county without fear or bias. Really, what would that look like? So for some of these, I think it would be difficult to say whether you're doing it or not doing it. It's something to, I guess, keep in the back of your mind as a school board member. So, I mean, I understand your perspective. Is there one in particular that you think would be more troublesome than the rest? But, I mean, I do think it's important to remember, as a board member, you are one of seven. You, and I think that is the purpose behind number eighteen. And nineteen, those seem to be a little bit repetitive unless eighteen means something else that you're part of a greater whole regarding the entire district. Eighteen seems a little vague to me. So I don't know if we could combine those two.
Yeah, I think you probably could. I just think the less, like I said, I just wanna make sure that everything is enforceable, to an extent. But yeah, you could combine those two.
I mean, is everybody else reading eighteen as part of the education team of the district?
And maybe that needs clarification. We're, we're part of the whole system. We're not as an individual able to make these sidebar decisions.
So then I would think you would flip eighteen and nineteen, that remember first that you are part, the, the board is made up of seven, and then the seven is part of, is part of the district.
Right.
So you build down from there. And so to me, you, you can combine that into one bullet point or one number and think of it as, as sort of the top-down, that we are all, we are all part of a group. So how would you, I would, I would restate that into one bullet point. And then number twenty, say, you demonstrate respectful, respectful behavior towards all persons.
Yeah.
Ms. Nichols and board members not meaning to.
Dr. Burns, you're gonna have to speak up.
All right, I'll pick it up here. I might melt it across the way, I think we have to hold it right at our mouth. Sorry about that. Not, not to confuse things, but considering the function of a board, number eighteen, remember that a board member is part of an education team. The, the role of the board is to govern, and I'm wondering if governance is a word that you might want to consider.
Yeah.
So that would, that would look at it differently, that would, that would, it's true. So that would, that would present a different, eighteen differently. And very good point. So nineteen would be the strength of a school board is as a board of seven, or as a board, maybe not put a number in there in case it ever changes.
Number nineteen is, I think, essential.
So that a board provides governance?
Well, again, what I would.
How would you reword it?
Yeah, what I would offer is for eighteen, I'd replace education with governance. But remember that a board member is part of a governance team.
Yeah, I think that makes more sense.
Yes. Yes, that's good.
Okay.
Board members, excuse me for interrupting it, but going back to number thirteen, as I'm reading that addition, to require regular impartial evaluation of employees, it, it does seem to me that in the context of this policy, which is ethics for individual board members, to require regular and impartial evaluations would be something that I think would be more appropriate to go in the, it's more of a directive to the administration to ensure evaluations rather than something an individual board member is committing to, to do. So just think about that and whether that is a necessary language.
So where would that be a better fit?
Well, I think that language would, and Janine or McKenna, please chime in, but I think that there would be a policy within the personnel section that requires evaluations of employees.
That would be, that's correct. It would be, our seven thousand section has over sixty policies related to personnel action and evaluation of personnel obviously varies depending on whether it's a professional employee or support staff sort of employee. So I think Deborah's point is well-taken that the board could require the superintendent to provide these regular and impartial evaluations, and that would be more of something that would be in our, in the personnel policies rather than an ethical obligation of a board member.
So can we put that in? Sorry, so can we put that in the parking lot to make sure that that is covered in a different policy?
Yeah, the, in the personnel policies, there are policies about evaluating employees, so that will be addressed in other policies.
So we're gonna strike that?
We'll strike it. Mark it.
Is everybody in agreement to strike?
Yes.
Okay.
So eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, we've got eighteen, we're a governance team. Nineteen, I think we've agreed, Bill, that we need to keep that. Twenty, what about? Nelson, you have recommendations for changing?
That twenty's okay.
Okay.
Or did, or did you want demonstrate your respect towards all persons?
All persons, and it says country, is it supposed to say country or county?
I would say country, but is that?
Either one.
So you're okay with leaving it as is?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So. McKenna, are we ready for the next one? Oh, just asking you on page three. When we say adopt this, and this is the new policy, new manual, there's no indication that there's been any previous policy?
We generally don't. If you'd like, we could do something where we put something where it was formerly policy, whatever. That would be, that's really easy to do for a policy like this where there's an obvious, another policy, one other policy addressed this and that's it. That just gets more complicated when we have a policy that you're adopting new and you had, I guess if you had a whole bunch of other policies, we could name them all. It just, I guess it becomes mostly complicated if you had a policy that was one policy and it's now parts of different policies. But I mean, if, but we could do, we could do formerly policy, whatever, if that's something you're interested in.
I was just thinking if, if the public could see that initially it was twenty-one or nineteen ninety-eight or whatever, when it was first established, that we didn't just all of a sudden decide to have a twenty-twenty or twenty-two, twenty-three.
The new policy could show formerly adopted as so-and-so at the bottom, under the adopted page. And some policies, you wanna do that to show that you've had a policy in existence for a while. So that would be under the adopted, that could be, put in the adopted information.
Okay.
Can't hear you, Jeanette.
Pardon?
Uh, we can't, sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. If they said formerly adopted and given the date, would show that the board, or the boards previously had addressed this issue.
Yeah, you just don't want to give the impression it's the exact same policy because it probably isn't going to be the exact same policy as.
Yeah, topic formerly adopted, whatever.
Formerly, yeah.
Yes, okay. I think that would, would help.
Ms. Nichols, before we move on, is the expectation that the revision in this policy will be presented at the next board meeting as a recommendation to the board for first reading?
I'm in agreement, Bill, what about you?
I'm with me.
Yes, so we can put it on the agenda for May?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Burns. Okay. So we're ready for the next one?
Okay, so the next policy is remote participation in board meetings. So this was something that you did not previously have a policy on. Most of the information, and so in the correlation table, I note this, that this policy may be modified, it's optional. So the information in this policy, you really can, most of it, you can just modify however you wanna handle the topic. So I, do you have any questions about any of this? This is all new to your manual.
When you, A1, where you say, second line, the board is, that is not a hearing as described in policy twenty-five hundred, that's your twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
Okay, so are you saying with this that if we were having a employee hearing, we could not use remote
Uh, yeah, this is saying it, the board is authorizing remote participation in any meeting that's not a board hearing.
But we just did that.
Ms. Nichols, I was just gonna say, given the current circumstances, that it has become necessary to hold hearings remotely. And so that's just something for the board to think about. You can certainly, you know, address it here or address it by waiving a policy, although that adds another layer of complication.
Because it takes another action by getting the board's attention. Can't we put something in here, Dr. Burns, that would address this emergency setting?
Well, I guess the thing you wanna decide is whether you want to make it always, you know, if, if you only want to do these hearings if there's an emergency, that would be different than if going forward, you wanna make it possible all the time. So that, that would be a board decision, yeah.
I would think only in an emergency situation would we do that. But what, what constitutes that emergency?
So actually too, in this policy, the way it was written, it's, it's generally talking more about you have a board member who, for some reason, an individual board member cannot attend a meeting. And so this was, this is really talking about how, whether, and under what circumstances you're going to allow that one board member to attend remotely while everyone else is there in person. And then down at the end in Section D, electronic board meetings, that's acknowledging how there are gonna be, there could be times of emergency such as natural disasters, health emergencies, like the one we're in now, that would require the whole meeting to be electronic as opposed to just one member or two members attending electronically.
So since this is only about, or should be about, participation, participation at board meetings, can we take this about the policy twenty-five hundred out of this policy and save it till you get to twenty-five hundred?
I think that's, will make it a lot more complicated for you in the long run if you're having to go back and re. I think that's, will make it a lot more complicated for you in the long run if you're having to go back and re-
Okay.
Re-review and revote on every single reference to another policy.
Okay, so Deborah, can we put in here to?
If I'm, sorry, if I might to, to recommend perhaps addressing, leaving the Section A1, but addressing hearings under D where there could in fact be an entirely remote hearing if it's necessary. So that way, if, if it's what the policy committee wants to not allow individual board members to participate remotely in hearings, but to allow hearings to be held remotely in the event necessary, that could go under D.
That would make sense.
So we're just talking, we're just talking about the, the hearings before the board in particular, correct?
And that, that would be student as well as employee, wouldn't it?
That would be, that would be my recommendation. Because there may be circumstances when you have a, a state of emergency where the schools are closed and you're holding remote meetings. You could have either an employee or a student matter that needed to be heard.
So you would put it under B?
D.
B what?
D.
D as in dog?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So will you help us with that wording?
Yes, we, McKenna, can you come up with a draft that you could send back to them with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or recommendations for changes or concerns?
Somewhere, I, I can't find it right now, but somewhere there I read, you know, somebody can't just use this to not come to meetings.
Oh, yes.
It, it, you know, it has to be something serious for them to miss.
It's under A, A4.
Okay. Which kind of cleaned the whole policy up, I thought.
So, on this one, it, we're talking just about, McKenna, we're just talking about board meetings, the regular monthly board meetings.
Yeah.
So we're not talking about committee meetings.
I'm sorry, you're not talking?
Definitely we're going to have more than three remote committee meetings.
And are you talking about in general, general, normal times or like right now?
Well, I, I guess this is normal. We're talking here in general ti- normal times for board meetings. So.
We all, we all have to do it remote right now under these circumstances. I think, I was talking about under normal circumstances, like ain't this.
Right. Number four, if you're talking about A4, you can change that. That, that provision is just intended to just allow so that you don't want, you don't want people to just be missing the meetings in person all the time for no good reason. A2 actually talks about how they can, they can participate remotely if they can't attend a meeting due to, and it gives all the reasons. So that would eliminate people not attending because they just don't want to come in person.
Oh, I understand that. But, so we would not be limited for committee meetings remotely.
Ms. Nichols, my interpretation would be that any policy that addresses board meetings should include any committees of the board. And if it's not clear, then that certainly would be something you would want to address, but I'm not sure it would make sense to have a policy that addressed remote access at board meetings, but didn't include remote access for committee meetings if that were necessary.
Yeah, I think we need to add something in there. Because we're going to go past three. Three times.
Can you say that again?
What? I can't hear you, Ms. Nichols.
I'm sorry. I don't know what I'm. Um, can you hear her now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so number four, we need to add something in there to communicate about committee meetings as well. Is that what you're saying?
So you want us to revise the policy to make it clear that this policy also would apply to board committee meetings also in Section A? Is that what you're? I mean, the emergency part obviously is applying to committee meetings too.
But it, but it's not clear, but, but we would be restricted to meeting only three times in committee? If there's an emergency setting?
No, that's just for individual, that's just for individual board members.
Yes.
These, these extreme circumstances are covered in D. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this is just for individual board members.
But we could work the policy to make it clearer that this applies not to just board meetings, but board committee meetings.
Yeah, I think, I think in A1, we could say that. In A1, it says the board authorizes remote participation consistent with the requirements of this policy in any meeting of the board that's not a hearing. We could say in any meeting and make it clear, including committee meetings.
Okay, that, that would help.
That's right.
Are there any other questions about this policy?
No, ma'am.
So are we ready for this one to go to the May board meeting for first reading?
I think so.
Okay. Dr. Burns?
Yes, ma'am. We will have it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Ready?
Okay. So then the next policy, so you had, I, I was sent two different, or multiple different policies regarding nepotism. It looked like one was your current policy and another was the one that the committee had started, had considered, but it had never gone before the board. So I just looked at the, and so now this is, this policy forty-one fifty-five is talking about assignment to students, assignment to classes for students. And so this is only concerning the nepotism part that has to do with students being taught by a close relative. So we added that, we would add that to this policy. This policy is all about assigning students, students to classes. So that seemed like a natural place to put the topic. It's added at the end. I just, it's not, it's not verbatim. It's the, it's basically using language from your old policies, but it's, it could be revised however you want it. This is all your language, but it's not, I mean, I was given different language. I was given policies that said slightly different things. So this is sort of a mixture of it. So I, but this can be changed however you'd like it.
In other words, this is an example of a place where you are addressing one nepotism sort of globally in one policy and what our suggestion would be is to take matters related to assigning children to people there, to be taught by people they're related to and add it into our student assign, class assignment policy as opposed to including it in a personnel policy that talks about one employee reporting to another employee who's a relative. We feel like this is a better fit for your assignment to classes. Your principal could refer to this policy and see all the different considerations that would go into assigning children to a specific teacher, including, uh, North Carolina law has, you know, we have a law about assigning twins and there, there are laws regarding military kids. So this is, is another consideration a principal would, would take into account when he or she assigns children to a class year by year by year.
So your policy manual doesn't have any language that speaks to this in particular?
No. No, it does not. Well, that's why we kind of tried to take yours and craft it into something that seems to address the concern and place it in a context related to student assignment issue.
I think it's very clear and would be very helpful to, certainly parents, but our new principals. That line very logical. And to the law.
And it kind of is a lot less complicated. You know, the whole nepotism is usually about one employee reporting to, you know, their spouse or their father or somebody like that. Like, it's pretty complicated on the HR end, but this little piece involving assigning children to classes is actually simpler unless you have a school where there's only one of each grade, and then you might have some conflicts, or maybe you would have conflicts because at a high school, there's only one art teacher. So a high school, if a high school kid wants to take art and his mother's the art teacher, then, you know, there would have to be an exception. But it doesn't involve the complicated human resources issues involving with promotion and pay and all that, that are more complicated than this.
Bill, did you see anything that?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Looks, that part looks fine to me.
Yeah, it's very concise. Alright.
Excuse me again for interrupting. McKenna or Janine, could you just talk briefly about the rest of the assignment to class policy? I know some of those are required by law provisions. Are there other provisions that the board has discretion on?
This policy, not really. This policy is basically just talking about how, it starts off talking about how the principal has a statutory right to assign students to classes. And then the multiple birth siblings comes out of statute as does the, the military families that comes from the Interstate Compact for Military Children.
Obviously.
Sorry, we didn't have anything about this in our policy before?
I did not see, so normally before I start, I make a correlation table of all your old policies and I make a chart showing which policy in our new manual they correlate to, but we started this process really quickly, so I haven't done that yet, but I did, I did try, I looked, I tried to look through to see if I could find anything and I did not find anything, but I haven't done a thorough look through yours yet. But as far as I could tell, you did not have anything on this topic.
Okay. Thank you.
May just be in our administration manual.
Yeah, and these are things that, I mean, these other parts come out of statute, so it may have been something you felt like you didn't need to put in the manual because as long as they were following the law, they're fine. It's not necessarily something that has to be spelled out in policy.
But I think this is helpful to the parents.
Yeah.
So, are we ready to send this to the May board meeting for first reading?
I think so.
Now comes the hard policy.
Now, the last policy, because you wanted to address nepotism. So we addressed nepotism in Policy seventy-one hundred, recruitment and selection of personnel. But this policy is not just a nepotism policy. This policy concerns like recruiting, like, you know, recruiting people for positions, the background checks you're going to do, just select, how you're going to select qualifications for applicants, and that's where nepotism comes in. And employment procedures. So you, your policy manual, this, the nepotism policies would correlate to this one, but also so would policies, your old policy six thousand sixty-one twenty-one and sixty-one thirty-three. So I did, if you, if you scroll through it, you'll see there are some places where I added some details from some of your old policies. And if you look on the correlation table, it's like, I give a much more thorough explanation of what I've done, what policies you've had, you have on the topic, how I've added some of that information or haven't added information. And then there's a lot of just, so this policy has a lot of different topics addressed and there are places where I just wanted you to note certain, certain things that it's not explained in the, in the policy itself, but that you should understand. So there's a lot of notes that go along with this policy in your chart.
Lisa, on page four, to B, with this address, you're concerned that when you ask Wayne to revise a nepotism policy about staff members and board members having relatives hired by the system? I, I think what they've done is made it very fair that we're not going to discriminate against someone because they are related to a board member or central office administrator. It still gives a responsibility to that, to that individual to report the relationship. Is that, are you saying this?
And this is a statutory requirement. Now, the notification and approval in open session.
Okay.
You know, when we did this, in the, the meeting that seemed like it really was a year ago, we were talking about this, the subject came up, what if we hired somebody moving to Wilmington? And he was, say the, the the wife was going to be an administration and the husband was a principal. As long as you know that upfront and one of them's not overseeing the other one, is that something that could work out?
My concern is that when it gets to that point, like it might not be at that point initially. What, what has happened is it gets to that point eventually and then the board doesn't know about it. So what I don't want to happen is that you hire somebody and you might disclose that, that relationship upfront, but then over time, they're, the, the person, this could happen, that person gets promoted and then there gets to be a supervisory relationship and the board doesn't know about it. That's what I would like to prevent from happening. So how does this policy prevent that from happening without the board knowing about it? Deborah, can you, can you speak to that?
The, the policy does provide that no administrative or supervisory personnel may directly supervise a member of his or her immediate family. Now, it sounds to me that what you may be looking for is not just at the initial hire, but that the board is notified if there is a transfer or promotion or reassignment. Is, is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
And so I don't, maybe McKenna or Janine could address that language to make it a little more, I mean, there's already a clear prohibition on supervision. So that would seem to be that it would prevent an assignment like that, but I don't know if you, you've had specific experience that would cause the concern that you're raising.
Who, me?
No, I'm just saying the board may have had a specific concern in mind where language like this, I mean, do you feel like D, two D is not sufficient to address that?
It does, it does, it does as long as our administrators do it.
My concern with this policy here is that we don't, we don't, it doesn't address people that are dating. And a lot of people live together that are not necessarily a spouse or, you know, domestic partnerships, like none of that seems to be in here. It's not just about being immediate family in regards to the law. I, I have concerns about people that are in a dating relationship with supervisory expectations as well.
And I also would like to make sure that the board is included in this because there is, there is some indirect influence there. So, and, and I guess influence would be the word that I would use, that if you could, if you provide any sort of influence over another position, that you, you cannot use that influence in any capacity to, to help promote somebody else. And that, that to me is the point of this, this policy. So I don't know, I, I'm probably being too vague, but again, to me is that we are trying to be as fair and impartial as possible in the hiring and promotion process. So we have to take out any sort of bias or anything like that. So how do we do that through the language of this policy?
Well, if we go back to, to AI, immediate family, maybe we need to change that and add other relationships in here, different.
So I think one thing that the board could think about before you get too far down this road is that this, this is, the provisions you're looking at have to do with hiring. And as Deborah mentioned, you know, once you get behind, beyond hiring, there's a concern also if someone is promoted or reassigned or transferred, that the same standard should apply in terms of administrators, people not supervising close relatives. So I, I think that's one thing. Our policy, just to be upfront and McKenna didn't get to this yet, we, our policy really doesn't address fraternization issue, if that's the word of, you know, people who are not in legal, you know, direct blood family relationships and are not in married relationships. And that's a little trickier to figure out ongoing because those kinds of things tend to, you know, happen and then the relationship is over and, you know, so it's more fluid. So one possibility the board could consider, and I, I think this is a more complicated issue and it might not be that the board is ready to send this to, I mean, the policy committee might not be ready to send this to the full board in a week. It might bear more thought, but one possibility would be to have a separate policy just on fraternization of, you know, people already employed and leave this hiring, as Deborah said, this hiring two thing is a statutory provision. This is the basic statute. So you can go beyond that, but it does add a layer sort of complication to your policy. The fraternization issue also is beyond what any specific North Carolina statute requires. So that requires a little more thought and careful thinking to make sure you're not discriminating against people or blocking career advancement based on things that aren't maybe long lasting or maybe people just think people are in relationships, so they think there's bias. I mean, it becomes more complicated than when someone is clearly married or a parent or a stepparent or something like that. So this is a, this is a complicated, the fraternization is a complicated issue. And I, I don't think we were prepared to recommend on our, on the bait, on the School Board Association, we're not, we're, did not come to the meeting today prepared to recommend, to recommend a fraternization policy because we don't have one. We could certainly assist the board with samples of others besides the one that you have here. And, but this is certainly a tricky area that we would strongly encourage that you consult with Deborah about quite a bit. The things that are in our 7100 policy, the nepotism, those are in the statute. So they're pretty much, you know, they're legally the ground floor. When you go beyond that, that's when we think you need to get some, you know, some input there. And we're happy to provide sample policies to help you think through it. And of course, see Deborah's advice.
What do you think, Bill? I think that's a good plan. Leave this separate and then have a fraternization policy and get some samples and get Deborah's input.
We, we've had this fraternization policy all along. Is that right?
Well, we've had.
The one we're looking at right now.
We've got nepotism. And.
If you want to keep it totally as is, of course, you could do that, that this, I see it was adopted in 2014. So I think it's, that was six years ago. That's worthy of some review just to make sure it's still what the board wants six years later. But, you know, we can, if you decide you want a separate policy, we can assist you with assigning a number that would fit within our numbering system and it could go to the board that way. This is one of those areas where the board, policy committee, and then the board in full session would need to think about what they really, you know, what they want to do.
If I might just make two points. So the fraternization policy that you currently have and is going to remain in effect until the board takes some action. So you do currently have a policy to address that. And until the board takes some action, it's going to remain in place regardless of whether you adopt this new recruitment policy. The recruitment and selection policy really is directed toward that initial hiring process and decision making. And so it's not going to reach out to impact those other things that, that we, you know, transfers or, or promotions or reassignments, those things that would occur later. And concerns about undue influence in that process could be addressed later. But I certainly would recommend that if the policy committee members think that this one needs additional review and maybe some additional thought to, to hold off and, and not take it to the board on, on next week.
I, I think, I think I didn't, the policy, the way the fraternization policy reads, I like it. The, the only problem we got is we're not enforcing it. That's what we need to address as the board, I think.
And I might just recommend that that be on the agenda for a later policy committee meeting. And as Janine said, they can number it and fit it in where it would go and maybe give some additional examples. So since it has been six years, the board could, or the policy committee, and then the board could consider it again when adopting it.
Good.
Okay, so.
And the one thing about this 7100, I noticed that it does refer to, in several places, to Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And I know that, that currently that position is vacant and maybe adding or designate would be appropriate to ensure that there's coverage. I'm looking, for example, in section C, criminal history, it says applicants must notify the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources immediately. If there's not someone in that position, there ought to be a place where people are responsible for fulfilling that task or that role.
So we're gonna.
Yeah, we can, we can change the titles as appropriate to, when we say Assistant Superintendent for Human Relations, obviously a lot of our smaller systems just substitute the word Personnel Director in there. It, that title, any of the titles can be changed to match the administrative structural names that New Hanover has.
McKenna and Janine, the Assistant Superintendent for HR is the correct title.
Okay.
I do agree with Deborah, it would be good to add or designate.
I'm fine with moving this.
McKenna can make that revision into the policy for reference. Sure.
So is it, are we gonna table this 7100 or are we gonna move it forward?
We're gonna table it and have more discussion and get.
She's out.
Got frozen.
Yep. So the purpose of tabling it is to discuss what in particular? Or to think about what in particular? The, the nepotism portion?
Well, if it's only for hiring and recruitment, why couldn't 7100 go forward and we can figure out what we want to do with the nepotism piece?
You mean the fraternization piece?
Fraternization piece.
That's what I'm thinking. If, if, if everyone is okay with the nepotism piece, if it seems to cover the initial hiring, then I'm, I'm comfortable with moving it forward and then covering and making sure that we do put on the agenda for policy, the fraternization piece.
So what are we, what are we going to be studying, Lisa? I mean, what are we, what part of it are we not doing?
You mean the policy 7100? I'm not sure if I understand what you're saying. I mean, the thing, the thing I was, yeah, the thing I was uncomfortable with was just, I, I, 7100, the way that it reads, you have to make sure that both the disclosure is made and the board is doing its job in terms of understanding what that relationship is and what they're going to do about it. So to me, I see it as a two-parter. So as long as both of those parts are being fulfilled, we're okay. You know, I, I guess I, I still have a little bit of reservation, but I think it would be fine for the full board to discuss. But I think the fraternization piece is also necessary and that, that discussion is necessary. So Stephanie, do you have additional comment?
No, I, I mean, I would like to continue the discussion about this. I just, you know, I, I feel I'd so much rather, I prefer to err on the side of caution with this, with these policies around nepotism and fraternization. So, you know, will the board, but, you know, I, I would like to have a real strong stance on, on what expectations are moving forward.
I mean, I think. So to be clear, are we gonna take 7100 forward with the one revision adding designate? Or is it going to remain in the committee?
Deborah, Deborah, did you have something to add?
Well, I do think, I mean, I, I do think that you could, there is room, and it sounds like there may be a desire to strengthen the, sort of the aspirational language about selecting the best candidate for a position without influence or bias and after a thorough process to select the most qualified, best qualified. I mean, there is, there's some language like that that you could certainly, I, I could, I could imagine being added even into the general principles of this kind of a policy that would make known the board's position and the board's intent very clearly, you know, right from the outset. That would be separate and apart from nepotism or fraternization, but it would address the C-steps concern about influence and fairness. And so, I mean, I think that's some language that we could, we could work on beefing up at the beginning if that's an interest. And in that case, then the policy should probably not go forward until the committees had a chance to look at that.
We also, yesterday talked in our equity committee about looking through the lens of equity. Would this be an area, would this be an appropriate place to put some language around that? Or could there be some language dealing with equity in, in, in this policy? I know that we've got some language about, let's see.
There's a pretty basic non-discrimination language, but again, that might be a place that you want to beef up. Janine, I don't know if you are aware of other policies that would address that. I know there's, sometimes there's an EEO policy more generally, but certainly this seems to me a logical place to put language like that.
At the end of Part A in general principles, it does have like a line or two about.
About diversity.
Diversity and trying to encourage a diverse pool of qualified applicants. So if you wanted to add language there.
Another thing that I would also like to point out in the process of this is that this policy does have some fairly specific criminal background check requirements. And those are state, those are statutory in nature. And I just, I, I didn't do the looking, but McKenna informed me that your board had sort of a variety of criminal history kind of policies going on at the same time. These are sort of the floor, they're baseline, but in terms of the superintendent implementing these, I would expect that they're already in place. But that would be something that would, these policies would certainly, might have an impact on how HR conducts things if they haven't been following or some of this isn't in current practice.
If y'all didn't miss me, I'm back. Mine just went away and I had to start all over again.
Glad to have you back. We, to catch you up, Jeanette, we're, we're gonna table 7100 officially.
Yes.
And add, add some language to it.
Okay.
The other thing that I might ask the, the committee members to think about under the criminal history check, and if I've missed it, Janine, apologize, but some districts want to have not just the initial employment criminal background check, but also to have ongoing sort of monitoring background checks. And I'm not sure that's addressed. If it, if that's the desire of the board and it's not addressed, it, it would also need to go in there.
Wait, could you say that again? Deborah, I'm sorry.
Some school boards, school districts have contracts with third-party vendors to do the initial criminal history check, but they also have an ongoing so that if an employee is arrested or charged, that will automatically pop up. There's a continuous monitoring. And I don't know, I, I didn't necessarily see that in the policy. And McKenna or Janine, if I've missed that, let me know. But I think, I think it would be appropriate to add that sort of language in here. And Dr. Burns, I don't know if that's something that you and HR have gotten to yet or not.
We haven't discussed that. Mr. Manz, are you still on the call here on the meeting?
Yes, I'm here.
Could you talk a bit about the current practice briefly, please, for criminal record checks for existing employees?
For New Hanover schools?
Yes, please.
So the current policy says that an initial background check would be done at the time of hire. There is a third-party vendor that is doing the background checks, reporting back to the school system. Having had experience in another district with background checks with a different company, the company that's currently being used is giving somewhat of a limited amount of information. Okay? As far as the ongoing checks, what I had implemented in Wake County for all the volunteers and several areas of the employees. and several areas of the employees that drove like Wake County vehicles, like bus drivers and maintenance operations folks, is we had a, um, an ongoing monitoring process where if an individual received any kind of citation or charge, felony misdemeanor charge, uh, I would get an email the day after the charge, and depending on what the charge was, uh, we would, uh, notify the employee, either take some kind of an action or just monitor as it worked its way through the system. Obviously, if it was a motor vehicle charge, a DWI, anything that involved any kind of issues with children, we did remove them from their position immediately, so that they were not driving or in a position to volunteer with students.
And I'd like to point out that we do have a policy that is not in seventy-one hundred that requires if an employee is arrested, that they notify HR within twenty-four hours. So, um, there's an obligation on the part of the employee to report, but what Deborah is talking about is sort of a continuous monitoring, and I think that could be added also.
The, um, from what I've seen, so this policy is saying that if, if a candidate incurs another charge, they have to notify the assistant superintendent within twenty-four hours. The, in the personnel policy, it says if an employee incurs a charge, they have five days to notify someone. And that, that is on the to-do list to talk with Dr. Burns about possibly modifying that policy, because five days is a long time for, uh, the school system not to be notified of a charge that had occurred. Uh, the policy that we used in, in the other county I worked for, it was immediately notify their supervisor and human resources, employee relations.
So it actually says in the personnel policy, five days?
Yeah, that's what I read. Yes, it said they had up to five days to notify. And it said to notify human resources. We added, in the other county, we added their supervisor, because they, they all know who they report to and have that compact information. And the supervisor would also direct them to contact employee relations. Five days is a long time. You don't want somebody that's, that drives a bus that just got a DWI to continue driving the bus.
Right, it's a very long time.
Yeah, the policy you'll get from us when you do the personnel policies requires current employees to report immediately, basically.
Okay.
Does it also spell out the, the method, sorry, does it also spell out the method and the consequences, or that is, that would be in, under procedures?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. It says, it basically says the employee shall notify the assistant superintendent for human resources, and you can add, and also their immediate supervisor. If they're arrested for a charge with or convicted of a criminal offense, including entering a plea of not, not guilty or null and contundere, other than a minor parking violation, notice must be in writing, must include all pertinent facts, and must be delivered no later than the next scheduled business day. Or within, or if they're actually incarcerated, within twenty-four hours of their release.
And, you know, we could certainly provide you with a copy of that immediately, so that you could consider that policy in, in the context of considering seventy-one hundred.
And that would be helpful.
Missy Step, to your question about consequences, incremental discipline typically is the practice, and if you specify the consequence, then it might not take into account any prior misconduct. And so that would be a practice that would be handled by employee relations and human resources.
Okay, thank you. Um, going back to the question about the, the vendors, is that gonna come up at any time about the, the vendor question, the, the ongoing monitoring?
Background screening? Yeah, I'm interested in that too. I, I worked for a local background screening company, and I had, was curious why we didn't provide services in Hanover County schools. And one of the things that was shared with me was that the background checks that the school system was getting were just like, I mean, the, the absolute cheapest that you could do. You know, they just had a really great deal. And, and I'm shocked, frankly, that we're not getting daily monitoring, to be honest with you. So I'm interested in that conversation as well.
We can have discussion after Mr. Manzo and I further explore both the company that's providing the service and the frequency.
Thank you.
So Dr. Burns, at one of our next policy committee meetings, you can share that information with us?
Yes, ma'am. We'll find the appropriate place to bring that, absolutely. So from my information, seventy-one hundred is going to sit on the table. There'll be revisions with information from McKenna, and there'll be some other language that'll be included in revision. Is that correct?
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask about the fraternization policy as well. The current policy, sixty-eighty-one, is in effect. And that's gonna remain on the table also for consideration after it's been reviewed at a future policy committee meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, I believe.
I'm not, I'm not sure that was on the agenda for today.
No, it was not.
Well, I think it was, it was technically gonna be covered under seventy-one hundred, but really, it's, it's sort of a, it's, it's basically a separate policy. So I think we just put that on the agenda for another time.
My understanding was the nepotism and fraternization policies were tied together and also addressed in the policy seventy-one hundred. And so we'll, we'll leave that for a future meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and what, just to clarify, what you, you are interested in seeing, if, if we can find other examples of fraternization language? Is there any other language for seventy-one hundred that you're looking for from me?
I think what we had talked about, Deborah, you're gonna, were you gonna add language for the criminal history? And then look to add language to the nepotism piece? And then possibly, McKenna, if you could look for additional language around equity to add to Section A? Is that my, that's my understanding of what we're looking for going forward.
I'm, I'm happy to work with McKenna to, you know, take what we've heard from the board members and, and come up with a proposal to bring back. If, McKenna, would that work for you?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
That would be both equity and the ongoing monitoring, or the ongoing monitoring is on hold.
Well, we would first need to know if they're, what kind of ongoing, if they are doing ongoing monitoring.
Okay.
I can follow up with Mr. Manzo and Dr. Burns once they've addressed that. There are issues of getting consents and for existing employees, that, you know, there's some complications and things that need to be considered. But we can, I can certainly work with them before this policy comes back to make sure that it includes what, what's being recommended.
So we'll send seventy-one hundred a lot of time and reviewing before we present it to the board. But we'll have it on the agenda for the next policy committee meeting, so we anticipate some revisions. So are we ready for Deborah's recommendation for eighty-four thirty-two use of service animals?
I think so.
This is, arose out of a complaint from OCR that we are attempting to resolve, and the OCR Office for Civil Rights and the Department of Education had a concern about this policy, and as well as procedures, but procedures are something that the administration can review and make changes to. And in essence, it's just to strike the proof of required vaccinations in the policy for miniature horses. There in fact is no North Carolina required vaccination for horses. And so this is not really consistent with state law or the Americans with Disabilities Act. There is going to be address, addressing service dogs, other service animals with required rabies vaccinations in the procedures, but this is a very simple recommended change to satisfy the Office for Civil Rights concern. And my expectation would be that the School Board Association can address the numbering of this policy as a, as just a cleanup matter when you get to whatever section this would go in for numbering. I don't, McKenna, is there a service animal policy that you would propose?
Yes, we have a policy on this.
Not only the alternatives, just on the service animal.
Right. It, we may need to, to talk about that, because if this is, this has sort of got the stamp of approval from OCR, I don't know that they'll want to, to make changes, but we can look at that.
We can deal with that when the time is, when we get to that among the, I guess that's a six thousand for us?
It's triple-coded.
So Deborah, you're asking for this to be presented to the board in May. Are you asking to waive first reading for this, or just go with the regular procedure?
I don't, I don't know that there's any need for waiving first reading, as long as it, I mean, I think it's a very minor change and would not expect there to be a concern about it. If it's approved at the June meeting, finally, I think that will be fine.
Okay. Janine, where we have on eighty-four thirty-two, we have a cross-reference for procedures. And we didn't, I don't recall how we're gonna go about separating procedures and listing and noting them in our policy, new policy manual. How does that come about?
Okay, so, um, our work with the board is exclusive on the policy. What would generally happen is once the board revises a policy and renumbers it, then the administration would need to review their procedures to make sure that the, the procedures are in line, or regulations are in line with the new policy. If, if they were still, then it would just be a simple matter of the administration reissuing the regulation with a new number. And if the administration needed to change that, of course, they could change the language and issue new language to support the board's newly revised policy. The main thing we would stress is that board policy and school system practices need to be aligned. So if the two aren't aligned, then either the policy needs to change or the practice needs to change, so that they support each other. And so the numbering system, renumbering of a regulation or a procedure would follow the adoption or revision of a policy.
So it would be our responsibility to locate the procedures and align them, is that correct?
Well, technically, it's the superintendent's responsibility or the persons he or she delegates to that. The board does not need to vote on procedures, per se. So when you say our,
I meant the system.
But not you as a policy committee.
No, no, no.
If I could talk a bit about procedures. As a board, I'd be very thoughtful about which policies include that the superintendent shall develop procedures. To make certain that there are in fact procedures in place. Not every policy requires a procedure. One of the events that you do not want to deal with is that a policy has been approved and it requires procedures about the policy, and in fact, there are no procedures. That's very problematic. At the time, the policy needs to be applied. Going forward, I think the practice of the school association is to frequently include and the superintendent shall develop policies, I mean, procedures and regulations. That's something that I would want to talk about with each of those policies, to make sure that it is required going forward.
And I, I would just add also that separate from our policy manual, we do have a sample administrative regulation manual. So for every policy, so we have three hundred, let's say we have three hundred and ten policies in that neighborhood, there are about sixty, sixty-five policies that do say the superintendent shall develop regulations. And often that's because, let's say something like with federal grants, there are things that are supposed to be covered by either policy or regulation, and if we're saying the superintendent is developing regulations, it's usually because there's a requirement for more detail than is in the policy. However, as I was said, we do have a sample administrative regulation manual that is very low cost. I think it's two thousand or twenty-one hundred bucks, and it's not, it's not a recurring cost, it's one time and then updates. But anyway, so we do have sample regulations that could be reviewed by administration to see if, how it would fit within the scheme of policies that your board decides to adopt. But yes, it is bad to say you're gonna have a regulation and then you don't have one. That's not a good thing.
And I think we're in that position in certain areas. But I'm confident that Dr. Burns and his staff will address it and will move on. So we'll have this on for first reading with the other policies for the May meeting, and we've done a good job. A lot covered, didn't we?
Yes, we did. If you would indulge me, I'd like to go through my understanding of where we are with the policies that have been reviewed today. It won't take but a few moments. And what we've done.
If you'll pull that microphone up.
There you go. I tell you what, it keeps going. I'm gonna have to work on this. Either a new set, a new headset or another microphone. I'm gonna talk with Janine about the policy manual hosting to be clear on how we could best handle old and new policy manuals. Policy twenty-one twenty, Code of Ethics, will go to the May meeting for first reading with revisions. We will need to delete policy twelve forty, Code of Ethics, to get the numbering right. Policy twenty-three oh two, Remote Participation in Board Meetings, that's the new policy that will be on for first reading at the May meeting with revisions from McKenna. Policy forty-one fifty-five, A Summat to Classes, will be on the May meeting for first reading. Policy sixty-eight, I want to be clear on this. Is this to be deleted because it is addressed in the other policy?
I think for now, sixty-eighty and sixty-eighty-one stay until we update them. Is that, that's correct, that would be correct?
I was clear on sixty-eighty-one, not clear on sixty-eighty.
I think both should stay.
Okay.
Yeah, until, until we get seventy-one hundred ironed, ironed out.
Got it. Okay.
I think we had an updated, sorry, we had an updated sixty-eighty that we, that was in policy that had not been taken to the full board. So until we do something else, I think the old sixty-eighty and sixty-eighty-one stay.
Seventy-one hundred will hold for revisions to include influence, equity, and criminal record checks that are ongoing. Fraternization, policy sixty-eighty-one remains for future consideration. And finally, policy eighty four thirty two, use of service animals will go forward um, with the revision that Deborah Stagner has provided. Does that capture our next steps?
Yes, you take good notes. Bill, do you have any comments you want to add to our meeting?
No, ma'am. And really, uh, all this we've talked about doesn't mean um, make a hill of beans because uh, we're not in school.
But we'll be ready.
We're in school. We're just in school remotely.
Well, this, this has been, I think, very smooth considering all the different uh, policies that we have to think about and all the processes. And it's a great team, great team. And Mr. Manzo, now I know what you look like. Anything else, Dr. Burns, you want to add?
No, ma'am. Thank you very much. And um, it, it does take time to review the policies and have a discussion. Going forward, we'll have um, ten policies a month or thereabouts. So you can imagine the time it will take. And um, we'll just work through it. And I'm really pleased the board agreed to, to move this process up so we could go ahead and begin. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, be safe. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Bye bye.
Bye.